We are live, Your Honor.
By the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all members of the City Council are here except for the Vice Mayor Eve Little, who is on vacation. We have a couple of employees that I'd like to introduce to the folks tonight. Let me ask Siobhan Henderson to join me at the podium. Wow, that's a warm reception. It only gets better from here. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to introduce Siobhan, who's been promoted, by the way, to Management Analyst One in the Finance Department. She joined the city in May 1 of 2023 as an accounting assistant and quickly demonstrated initiative and a strong desire to grow. She holds a Bachelor of Administrative Degree with a minor in management from the University of San Diego. Since joining the city, Siobhan has taken on a variety of projects to build her understanding of municipal finance. In her new role, she will support the implementation of finances, reporting and budget application, contribute to the development of the biannual budget, and assist with year-end financial reporting and analysis. Will she help you carry all the money out to the car at the end of the day?
That's already done. I'm loose.
Outside of work, Siobhan enjoys spending time with family and friends, camping, traveling and exploring new places. Congratulations on your promotion. It's not often finance people get, you know, pluses. I wanted to make sure I took every opportunity to have her enjoy that. And when I started my career in government years and years and years ago, I started in the Finance Department. So a special place for those folks, back when we basically used paper and pen, paper and pen. I'd like to welcome a new employee, Ms. Amanda Lopez, Ms. Lopez. Ms. Lopez is a new public safety dispatcher, so we need to make sure we get her back to work. No, in all honesty, this is one of the more critical positions in our community. She is the first person that folks are going to call and talk to when they dial 911 because there's an emergency occurring on their property or with one of their loved ones. So I have a great deal of respect, not only for our Police Department, all public safety, but certainly for public dispatchers. They remain calm, getting the information they deserve as they deploy whatever resource necessary to address the issue that we're dealing with. But she was hired as a public safety dispatcher in April of 2025. She grew up both in Newark and Fremont. She's hedging her bet. Hedging her bet. She knew the mayor's going to poke fun if it just simply said Fremont, Newark and Fremont, and graduated from Washington High School in Fremont. After high school, Amanda graduated from the San Joaquin Delta College with an AA in Social Science and CSU East Bay with a BA in Sociology. That's really apropos for that mighty work, isn't it? Amanda previously worked as a Program Administrator for Youth Crisis Residential Program in the Bay Area. In her free time, Amanda loves attending concerts, spending time with her family and camping. Please welcome our new employee, Amanda. Ladies and gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is the Public Comment Section. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to talk about any item or bring any item forward that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I'll close Public Comment. The next item is the Consent Calendar, and it consists of the following. One is the Approval of Audit Demands, Approval of the June 5 and June 12 2025 Minutes, Adopt a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Purchase Order with Dell Marketing LP Dell in the amount not to exceed $475,785 for the renewal of licenses and software assurance and subscription services for three years, Adopt a Resolution Accepting Work with G. Bartolo &amp; Company Inc. for the Fiscal Year 2024 Asphalt Concrete Street Overday Program Project 1344. City Manager, any item you want to pull from the agenda on the Consent Calendar?
Not this evening, Your Honor.
Colleagues, any item on the Consent Calendar you'd like pulled? Yes, Councilmember.
I don't believe it needs to be pulled, but I'd like to abstain from the June 12 meetings, having not been here.
Great. Thank you for that, Councilmember. Anybody in the audience who would like to speak to any item on the Consent Calendar tonight? Okay, with that being said, can I get a motion to approve the Consent Calendar with the one amendment as mentioned by Councilmember Grindal to abstain from the June 12 2025 Minutes? As a question, do we need to do two separate motions or can one motion suffice?
The motion is clear, so one motion is fine in this instance.
Okay, moved as recommended. Thank you. Councilmember Jorgens?
Second.
By Councilmember Cantancio, please vote. And Mr. Grindal, can I just assume that was a yes because we've made note in the record that you're abstaining from the June 12 2025 Minutes?
That's fine.
That'll be fine. Okay, so that passes with four ayes with Vice Mayor Little absent with the amendment as mentioned in the motion. Ladies and gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is the brings the first item is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the final Engineers Report confirming formation of Landscaping and Lighting District Number 20 and authorizing the levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 25 and 26. City Manager?
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. We have two scheduled public hearings this evenings, this evening, that are related to the landscaping and lighting districts throughout our city. Those are items E1 and E2. E2 is the typical public hearing that we go through with respect to the city's longstanding landscaping and lighting districts. We do have a separate public hearing, and that's item E1. This is, this relates to District Number 20 as this is a new district. This is related to the Robson Development that is occurring on Cedar Boulevard between Moore's Avenue and Smith Avenue. Back on May 8 of this year, the council approved the initiation of the proceedings for the formation of this new district and directed staff to mail notice to all affected property owners. For tonight's proceedings, staff is recommending that the council open the public hearing, receive comments from the public, then direct the city clerk to tabulate the ballots, and if there is no majority protest, then adopt a resolution approving the establishment of the district and also authorizing the assessments. We have a relatively brief staff report from our senior city engineer, Ms. Viva Deschmook. I'm going to go ahead and invite her up to the podium. Ms. Deschmook, you have the floor.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, City Councilmembers. Today, we are discussing a new formation of Lighting and Landscape District for tract 8583, which is Ropes and Homes on Cedar Boulevard, consists of 118 residential units, and the project is under construction right now. The Lighting and Landscape District allows the city to collect annual assessments from property owners to, you know, fund ongoing maintenance of the public improvements such as landscaping, irrigation and street lighting associated directly with the proposed development. This item is the final step towards formation of Lighting Landscape District Number 20 under the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 and Proposition 218 with assessment beginning of, in 2025, 2026 fiscal year. On May 8, like City Manager mentioned, the City Council had adopted a resolution approving the preliminary engineers' report and initiating the formation of the district. The proposed maximum annual assessment for this district would be 6,875, and the amount will increase annually based on Consumer Price Index. As required by Proposition 218, a notice and ballot was mailed to the affected property owner. The city clerk may open and tabulate the ballot after the public hearing closes tonight. If the ballot is in favor, the city council then adopts a resolution, final resolution, to approve Engineers Report and formally establish the district. The staff recommends the city council to open the, open the, open and close public hearing, tabulate the ballot, and adopt resolution confirming formation of Lighting Landscape District Number 20. I'm available along with our consultant Ed Espinosa from Francisco &amp; Associates here if you have any questions.
Sure. Colleagues, may I suggest that we open up the public hearing and close the public hearing, then we can come back to questions and comments. So I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the city clerk if she would tabulate the votes that we've received relative to this assessment?
The ballot is in favor.
Great. I feel like I'm waiting for the Oscar, you know, to, to, yeah. Thank you. So the public hearing's been closed. Any questions, comments, my colleagues? I just have a couple questions and comments, if I may, Mr. Benoon. The 6,000-plus assessment that was referenced, that ultimately would be apportioned among the 185 or so residents of that development?
Yeah, I believe the assessment is about $58 per unit. Is that correct, Engineers Report? That's my recollection. Am I right?
That's correct. It's $58.26 per unit.
And when we talk about landscaping, we're referring really to the public property in terms of landscaping improvements in that case. The one question I did have, and I probably should have asked this a long time ago when it came relative to this item, does that include sidewalk repair and maintenance?
No, sorry, not the sidewalk repair, Your Honor. It's just the landscaping in Median Island that will be constructed, newly constructed with the proposed project and irrigation associated with the median landscaping and street. There are five streetlights along the property frontage, and there is a full trash capture, which is basically a device. It's installed in the catch basin to kind of capture all the debris.
Perfect. And my last question, not part of the lighting and landscaping, Mr. Benoon, but I know as part of this development, if I'm not mistaken, there was the proposal that a streetlight would be constructed at that location. Do we have an idea as to when that streetlight construction will, will be, will begin and concluded?
There are, there are about, there are, so with the part of this, as part of this project, the right-of-way is being dedicated, and the entire sidewalk is actually pushed back basically towards the property, and there will be new streetlights and the traffic signal as well on Cedar and Smith that will be constructed as part of the project as well. And I, I believe it's, it's been, the material is already on the site, and I think they will be constructing it soon once the ACWD waterline connection has been made.
Perfect. Excellent report.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions or comments, I'll go ahead and ask the council for a motion in a second on this item? So moved. Moved by, thank you. Moved by Councilmember Jorgens, seconded by Councilmember Grindal. Please vote. And that passes unanimously with the Vice Mayor Eve Little absent.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Newark approving the Engineers Report confirming formation of Landscaping and Lighting District Number 20, authorizing levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
The next item, ladies and gentlemen, is a public hearing for Landscaping and Lighting Districts 247, 11, 17, 18, 19, and adopt a resolution confirming diagrams and assessments and levying and collection of assessments for Landscaping and Lighting Districts Number 1, 2, 4, 7, 11, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 for fiscal year 25, 26. Mr. Benoon?
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. This item is a public hearing to approve assessments for the various landscaping and lighting districts throughout our city. Just to provide some brief background, in the past, I've typically recused myself from preparation of the staff report on this item as I own real property inside District 11. At the May council meeting, Councilmember Del Cantancio recused herself as well as she has property within L and L District Number 11. Since that time, we have received formal written advice from the Fair Political Practices Commission authorizing both the council member and myself to participate in the landscaping and lighting proceedings, and that is because the low cost of the assessment does not constitute a disqualifying interest. Just for the council and members of the public who are watching, in the past, we've recused ourselves and at this point forward, per FPPC advice, that's not necessary. With that background in mind, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to our Public Works Director, Mr. Howard Young. He will provide a brief report to the council this evening. Mr. Young?
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Just wanted to review, a landscaping and lighting district allows the city to collect assessments from property owners to fund ongoing maintenance and public improvements such as street lighting, landscaping and irrigation. Staff tonight is recommending that the city council complete the third and final step related to the annual approval process by holding a public hearing for comments and adopting the attached resolution confirming the diagrams and assessments and the levying and collection of assessments for the districts. As background, the city previously completed all necessary proceedings to establish landscape and lighting districts numbers 1, 2, 4, 7, 11, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 to fund ongoing landscaping and lighting maintenance and improvements at various locations in the city through annual assessments in accordance to the provisions of the Landscaping and Lighting Act. The Act sets forth specific requirements for the annual approval of the districts, including preparation of an Engineers Report through a three-step council meeting process. The council has completed two of the three steps already related to the annual approval process for fiscal year 25, 26. On the first, on April 24, 2025, the council adopted a resolution initiating the annual assessment and renewal process and directing the preparation of the required engineer reports for the districts. The second step, on May 22, 2025, the city council adopted resolutions approving the annual Engineers Reports, declaring its intention to levy and collect assessments and setting June 26, 2025 today as the date and time for the required public hearing regarding the final approval of the fiscal year 2025, 2026, Engineers Reports and Assessments. Approval of the final resolution this evening is anticipated to provide a total of approximately 426,000 in assessment revenue to fund the landscaping and lighting maintenance and improvements benefiting the properties within the districts. Following the public hearing, the adoption of the resolution this evening, the district assessments will be submitted to the county prior to the deadline. This concludes my presentation. I and the Engineers from Francisco &amp; Associates are available for any questions.
Great. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, and this is an opportunity for any member of the public who would like to speak to the Landscaping and Lighting District Number 1, 2, 4, 7, 11, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19, to come forward and provide any comments, questions, concerns, objections. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and return to the council for questions or comments. Seeing none. Mr. Benoon, the only question I would have is, when this item comes back, whether it be next year or the following year, it'd be helpful, I think, for the council to kind of see some pictures kind of displaying really the activity of the work that we do out in these landscaping areas to show how they're being maintained and things of that nature. I think it might be helpful for the public to see that, you know, this is where your daughters are going, and this is what we're doing. Might be helpful. Maybe next year we could do that. With that being said, I need a motion in a second to approve this item?
I'll move approval.
By Councilmember Grindal?
I'll second.
Councilmember Del Cantancio, please vote. And that passes with four ayes, and Vice Mayor Eve Little is absent this evening.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Newark confirming diagrams, assessments, and levying, collection of assessments for Landscaping and Lighting District Numbers 1, 2, 4, 7, 11, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 for fiscal year 25, 26.
Ladies and gentlemen, the next item is a public hearing pursuant to Government Code Section 3502.3 requirements for reporting on City of Newark vacancy rates and recruitment and retention efforts. This is going to be a presentation only. It's not going to be required by us. Mr. Benoon?
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. Last year, the legislature passed a law that requires public agencies to hold at least one public hearing per fiscal year to discuss staff vacancies as well as recruitment and retention efforts. As the mayor indicated, this is an informational item. No action is required. Because this is a new state law requirement, we thought it'd be appropriate for our new HR Director, Ms. Brittany Frye, to provide the staff report. Ms. Frye, you have the floor.
Thank you for the introduction. So as City Manager Benoon mentioned, I am here, sorry, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I am here tonight to present the city's annual update in compliance with Assembly Bill 2561. Again, as mentioned, this bill requires all public agencies to report on staffing vacancies, recruitment efforts, and retention strategies at a public hearing at least once per fiscal year. AB 2561 went into effect on January 1, 2025, and is designed to promote transparency around staffing shortages and workforce challenges in public agencies. The law requires agencies to report on the status of vacancies, outline our current recruitment and retention strategies, and identify any policy or procedural changes that may be contributing to staffing difficulties. In addition to the citywide data, AB 2561 requires that we review staffing information by bargaining unit. The city has three bargaining units, including Newark Association of Miscellaneous Employees, or NAME, Newark Police Association, NPA, Newark Police Management Association, or NPMA, and we also have two unrepresented groups, including the management supervisory and professional employees as well as the confidential employees. If any one group has a vacancy rate above 20%, the city must provide additional recruitment information during the public hearing if requested to do so by the bargaining unit. We have had no requests for additional information at this time. We are also required to notify each bargaining unit of this presentation and provide them the opportunity to comment. That notification has been completed. Okay, so looking at the citywide data from July 1, 2024 through May 31, 2025, we hired 33 new employees, promoted nine employees internally, and had 19 separations during that time. Out of 185 budgeted full-time positions, we have 23 vacancies or had 23 vacancies as of May 31. We've hired a couple since then. This puts our current vacancy rate at 12.43%. This is the citywide rate, and this is within the expected range for public agencies in California, Northern California cities averaging about 10% to 16% vacancy rates. This data does not include temporary staffing such as lifeguards, recreation leaders, and others. Okay, so we have in front of you a breakdown of vacancy rates by employee group as of May 31, 2025. As you can see, confidential employees are fully staffed. This group includes HR and payroll technicians, admin assistants, and executive assistants. NAME has a vacancy rate of 2.13%, including recreation coordinators, maintenance workers, parks and landscape workers, administrative support, childcare, mechanics, and inspectors. Management supervisory and professional employees include a vacancy rate of 13.21%, which includes engineers, directors, supervisors, management analysts, planners, and other professional staff. NPA has a vacancy rate of 13.89%, including police officers, sergeants, dispatch classifications, records staff, and other public safety support positions. NPMA has a vacancy rate of 28.57% and includes lieutenant, captain, police support services supervisor, and community engagement manager. As you can see, the only one group exceed, that exceeds the 20% threshold is NPMA, so we will talk a little bit more detail on that on this side. So it's a little nuanced. We only have seven positions in this bargaining group, so one vacancy creates a very high vacancy rate. So we have two current vacancies in this group. The first is a vacant captain position in which the acting assignment for that role is currently being rotated amongst internal staff. This ensures continuity of service, succession planning, education and experience opportunity, and promotes internal promotional opportunities. Once all interested lieutenants are providing the acting captain opportunity, a recruitment will begin. There is also a vacant police support services manager position. This position oversees the communications, records, and property and evidence sections of the department, and prior to opening the recruitment, the department and HR are currently working to review the scope and responsibilities and compensation of this classification. We anticipate opening both recruitments no later than the end of this calendar year. On average, filling an internal vacancy takes approximately six weeks. This process includes scheduling interviews, selecting a candidate, and developing transition plans to ensure consistent coverage of department responsibilities. An external process can typically take 13 weeks or longer and includes additional steps such as background and medical clearance. So over the past year, the city has made meaningful progress in filling vacancies. During this period, we filled 42 positions, opened 34 recruitments. These numbers differ slightly because a single recruitment can often be used to fill multiple vacancies for the same classification. Over this period, we also received over 1,100 applications and currently maintain 29 active eligible lists. And an eligible list is a pool of qualified candidates who have successfully completed a recruitment process and are available to be hired if a vacancy arises. You heard earlier in the presentation that the police management group has the highest vacancy rate amongst our bargaining groups. However, our highest vacancy by classification is for police officer. That said, the city has made several strides in recruitment and retention efforts and strategies, some of which are specific to that position, including the implementation of an employee referral bonus of $5,000, implementation of hiring incentives for lateral police officer positions of up to $18,000, moving expense reimbursement of up to $2,500. PD has also assigned a sergeant specifically for recruitment, and they are holding a booth at the Alameda County Fair specifically for recruitment. We are also holding standing interviews every two weeks and have an open and continuous recruitment for lateral and entry-level officers. Efforts made across the city and all positions include streamlining the recruitment process to reduce delays and improve candidate experience, including, bless you, including increased candidate candidate communication at all stages in the recruitment process, not being passive with candidate communication and taking more active steps, including multiple forms of communication, working through technical issues, and being available for candidates regarding submittal of application materials, and increased advertising opportunities with targeted advertisements. The city also recently completed a comprehensive classification and compensation review and has worked to ensure employee compensation benefits and wellness are aligned with industry standards. Later on in the agenda tonight, it will be asked to approve MOUs and compensation and benefit plans that include benefits and compensation packages, helping to ensure we remain competitive in the market. Together, these strategies are helping us meet staffing needs while continuing to build a strong, service-oriented workforce. Okay, in closing, our current citywide vacancy rate is 12.43%. Again, that falls within the typical range for California cities, and we continue to evaluate our recruitment and retention strategies and are committed to creating a workplace where employees feel valued and supported. So I want to thank you for your time and continued support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, colleagues, I'm going to do the same thing we've done previously. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing first. So the public hearing is open on this item. It's an informational item only. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this item, questions, comments, concerns? Okay, this item is closed from the, for the public hearing. I'll turn it to my colleagues for questions. Councilmember Cantancio.
Yes. Hi, I did have one question about the lieutenants. Approximately, how long do the lieutenants go into rotation before they'd be considered as potentially moving up internally?
So as long as they meet the minimum qualifications for the position, they could be considered to move up into the position. The internal, the acting assignment is really a rotation to give them that experience to help them be stronger candidates. So it's not a specific length of time that they have to complete that before being eligible.
Great, thank you.
Other comments, questions? Councilmember Grindal?
Comments?
Or questions, either one?
Great. Comment, sorry, is first of all, excellent presentation, very informative, and very much appreciated, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the, and I'm very, I'm heartened to see that we're working hard to fill those vacancies, so I just really just wanted to compliment you on, on those efforts. It's really important that we have, that we have those positions filled. Public safety is critical, and in particular, so, you know, you've, you really answered all my questions that I would have asked in that process. I really just want to compliment you on that, on that effort, and just, again, stress how important it is to our whole community that, that we have those positions filled. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
I had a couple of questions and comments, if I may. AB 2561, any, any, Mr. Benun, any thoughts on what was the impetus for this assembly bill?
Ms. Frye, I'm going to defer to you. I certainly expressed my editorial perspective.
Oh, no, I'll express my editorial in just a moment. I haven't gotten there yet.
So I will say that I think AB 2561 is designed to promote transparency around staffing shortages and workforce challenges in public agencies.
Yeah, probably a transparent opportunity to demonstrate how we're reaching out to the entire community to fill positions. It's not simply done in a bubble. I imagine we received a significant amount of revenue from the state of California to help implement AB 2561. Can I count on like one hand how much money we may have received from the state on this? Okay. The, on your chart, which I thought was excellent, one thing I'd like you to add, maybe or consider adding in the future, is the average number of days to fill a position. Okay, I think you indicated six weeks if it's internal, a little bit longer if it's external. I think it'd be important for the community to know, as we're aggressively trying to fill positions, what's the average length to fill a position in the City of Newark? And it can be throughout the entire spectrum of classifications. The 1,183 applications that we received, did that include police officer applications as well?
Yes, that is citywide.
And I figured that's probably this majority of those are probably police officer applications of the 1,183. Do you have a breakdown on that at all?
We could get a breakdown, absolutely.
I imagine a significant percentage of the 1,183 are probably police officer applications. That would be my guess. And so maybe just a footnote next year, if that is indeed the case, maybe just a footnote that of the 1,183, for example, X number were police officers, that would be appreciated. And those are my questions. If this report had been given to us two months ago, the HR position, which was vacant at that time, it would have been like a flashing light in front of us, so welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I agree with Mr. Grindal. Councilmember Grindal, your presentation was excellent, thorough, and detailed, and certainly we are proud and happy to have you here in the City of Newark.
Thank you. I'm glad to not have added to the vacancy rate.
Great. So this, it was an informational item only. Thank you, Mr. Benun, for that. Ms. Frye, thank you very much for that. I'm now going to turn to other business, and the first item under other business presentation on the City of Newark Climate Action Plan update titled Climate Action Newark CAN. Mr. Benun?
Yes, good evening, your honor, and members of the council. Item F1 is a presentation of the city's 2010 Climate Action Plan. This update will provide the city with a roadmap to reduce greenhouse gas emissions stemming from activities that occur in Newark over the coming decades. To provide some brief background and context, the city began this project earlier this year by conducting a greenhouse gas analysis, and then we engaged the council, the community, to discuss various climate action strategies. These workshops in the city council session led to the creation of some draft strategies, and those strategies are being presented to the council this evening. A draft climate action plan will hopefully be circulated within our community later this summer for public comment, and then presented to the council for consideration for final approval later this fall. With that in mind, I'm going to pass it over to our environmental services manager, Mr. James Scanlon. Mr. Scanlon, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm, as David said, James Scanlon, Environmental Services Division Manager, and tonight I'm just going to go over the status of our update to the Climate Action Plan. So the city has a long history of being proactive in addressing the threat of climate change. In 2007, Mayor David W. Smith signed a U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement, thereby committing the city to taking action for climate protection. The city adopted a Climate Action Plan, or CAP, in January 2010. The CAP set a target to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from activities within the city to 1990 levels by 2020, an approximately 15% reduction. The city did meet that reduction target. Due to the increased awareness of the potential impacts of climate change, the state has adopted a very aggressive greenhouse gas reduction target of 85% below 1990 levels by 2045. In December 2023, this council approved contracting with Ascent Environmental to assist with a comprehensive update to the city's Climate Action Plan. We refer to the update as Climate Action Newark, or CAN. And tonight we have, the project manager is on the line this evening, I believe. Hannah Kornfeld is online, and she can answer questions as well. So Climate Action Newark is a comprehensive update to the 2000 Climate Action Plan. The goal is to align with the state's greenhouse gas reduction targets and to address climate mitigation and adaptation. It will also build upon other city initiatives, such as the Urban Forest Master Plan that we're going to be developing, the, what else, the Active Transportation Plan and the Facilities Master Plan. These can all be incorporated into the aspects of, the Climate Action Plan can be incorporated into those activities as well. The guiding principles for the, for Climate Action Newark are that it should be ambitious in reducing greenhouse gas emissions, should be realistic and attainable, it should equitably address the sources and risks of climate change, it should improve the city's livability and well-being of all community members, and be as specific as possible. This is a list of the co-benefits. Climate Action Plans have many calculations related to reductions in the metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent emissions. But at its heart, Climate Action Newark is about your vision for Newark's future, a vision that can include elements such as abundant tree canopy, community gardens, energy-efficient buildings, and walkable, and walkable neighborhoods. This is the project schedule. We began in December 2023 with the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, forecast, and targets. We have now developed draft strategies that we will present this evening. We will review the public, we will, that we'll also release this for public comment. We will review the public comments and prepare a final version of Climate Action Newark based on the feedback received, and we'll bring the plan to council this fall for consideration of adoption. So community engagement is essential for developing and implementing a climate action plan. In September 2024, the city hosted a community workshop that discussed both Climate Action Newark and the city's sea level rise adaptation strategy. We launched a project website in February, and in April, the city staff hosted a second community workshop for Climate Action Newark with both in-person and online participation. These workshops helped inform the development of the strategies and allowed city staff to better understand residents' priorities. I'll now discuss climate change mitigation. So we conducted a, an emissions inventory for 2022 and projected future emissions based on anticipated population, land use, and employment changes. Based on these projections, we calculated the reduction the city would need to align with the targets the state has adopted. Throughout our community engagement process, we have identified strategies and actions to meet these targets. So the city has direct jurisdiction of activities that generate emissions and contribute to reductions in five emission sectors. Newark's reduction targets are 58% below 2022 levels by 2035 and 88% below 22 levels by 2045. However, due to the benefits of state and federal legislation, these get us much closer to, to our targets. They provide Newark with a 40% reduction below 2022 levels by 2030 and 72% reduction below 2022 levels by 2045. Therefore, the goal of the Climate Action Newark is to reduce the remaining, the remaining amount, 18% reduction by 2035, and an additional 16% reduction by 2045. So this chart depicts Newark's future emissions, accounting for the impacts of regulations and legislation, as well as strategies proposed for CAN. The light blue area depicts reductions due to federal and state regulations, like building energy efficiency, fuel efficiency standards, electric vehicle sales requirements, and renewable and zero-carbon electricity requirements. The area between the light blue and the gray depicts the reductions due to CAN implementation. The red line is the target. Newark could meet its 2035 reduction target but fall just shy of the 2045 emissions reduction target through implementing the, the strategies that are, we're proposing in the CAN. So how do we propose to meet these targets? Based on the greenhouse gas emissions forecasts and input from the community, staff identified opportunities for emissions reductions in six focused areas. Within each area, we have identified strategies and actions to establish, to establish short and long-term initiatives to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Each strategy is actions with specific goals that provide co-benefits. Each action identifies responsible city departments and partner agencies to ensure implementation and public transparency. So now I'll go through each of these and give you highlights of some of the proposed strategies. So the first is energy transition and efficiency. The next is sustainable on- and off-road transportation. Third is responsible use of resources, nature-based solutions, and urban greening, community capacity and resilience, and municipal operations. So under energy transition, we have a number of strategies. So these include electrify and decarbonize the city's building stock, expand clean energy generation, promote energy efficiency, and some of the key indicators we would look at would be percent of existing buildings fully electrified and percent of carbon-free electrical, electricity use. The next is sustainable on- and off-road transportation. Strategies include make active transportation the preferred method of getting around where feasible, increase the safety and accessibility and reliability of public transit, and expand and encourage shared mobility options. Also, accelerate the adoption of zero-emissions vehicles, prioritize sustainable land use, and reduce emissions with off-road transportation and equipment. Some key indicators would be percent of vehicles that are EVs or PHEVs, percent of employers participating in transit, transportation demand management programs, and percent of zero-emission construction equipment. The next area is responsible use of resources. The strategies include expand the practice of circular economy and principles, and promote responsible organic and inorganic waste management and reduction practices. Also prioritize water-wise practices and technologies that minimize water consumption in the city. Key indicators would be percent of waste diverted from landfills and percent reduction in water consumption. Next is nature-based solutions. Strategies include maintain and expand the city's urban tree canopy, integrate green stormwater infrastructure, protect, restore, and enhance natural areas and wetlands, and promote sustainable landscaping practices that support native vegetation and pollinator habitats. Key indicators would include percent of priority landscape with tree canopy and areas of protected or restored habitat. Next is community capacity and resilience. Strategies include improve climate emergency preparedness, reduce exposure to extreme heat and mitigate the heat island effect, bolster protection for sea level rise and flooding, build a more sustainable food system and increase food security, create local, a local economy that prioritizes green businesses, and prioritize education and outreach opportunities to support Climate Action Newark. And finally, municipal operations. The strategies include reduce emissions from municipal buildings and facilities, minimize vehicle miles traveled for city, by city employees, shift to clean municipal on-road and off-road equipment, reduce municipal water use, practice sustainable waste management for municipal operations, and protect municipal assets from climate hazards. So these are some estimated reductions. Altogether there, there are 28 strategies and 95 actions. Of these four strategies are responsible for 91% of the emissions reductions. So those four strategies are: Energy 1, electrify and decarbonize the city's building stock. Energy 2, expand clean energy generation and use. Transportation 4, accelerate widespread use of zero-emission vehicles. And responsible use 2, promote responsible waste management. So these four strategies make up 91% of the total emissions reductions. For the next steps, we will release the draft Climate Action Newark for public review, and staff will develop and implement a plan for near-term strategies and actions, and staff will bring back a final CAN and implementation plan for city council consideration and adoption. All right, that, thank you very much, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Excellent. Let me focus up, that was a very comprehensive report. Let me see if there's any comments from the public before we open up for council comments and questions. Anybody from the public like to speak to this item? Okay, I'll return it to the council for questions, comments. Councilmember Cantancio?
Yes. Thank you so much for your presentation, and I really enjoyed the fact that you also included graphs and charts as well, but in particular, how you also included the strategies. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah. 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 Just briefly, I appreciated that we're tying this in with some of our other plans that have going on. I think you mentioned the Urban Forest Plan, the Active Transportation Plan, and the Facilities Master Plan. On the Urban Forest Plan and Active Transportation Plans, do you have a timeline for when those are going to come to council? For the Urban Forest Mass Management Plan?
Uh, for the urban forests mass, uh, management plan, which I'm overseeing, we just received, uh, proposals Tuesday, so we're going to be reviewing those and selecting someone to assist with that in the next couple of weeks, and, uh, might not make it before August recess, might be after August recess, we'll bring something to council. Uh, the active transportation plan, I'm not sure of the timeline, I don't know if Howard wants to say something.
Uh, on the active transportation plan, it's something that we're relooking at and processing, and so, uh, one of our associate, our new associate engineers is taking the charge of that, and will update the city manager to provide an update.
All right. Um, you know, I'm, I'm really, I'm happy to see that we're not trying to sidle off these plans, that we're looking to see how they do interact with each other. And, um, you know, one of the things that, you know, when we looked at goal, I think it was TR1, which was enhancing the, uh, making active transportation a, you know, more primary option, you know, when you think about our active transportation plan. There was a nice picture of bicycles on the slide. One of the issues that we do have is, you know, in Newark, at some of our larger shopping centers, aren't places to, you know, lock your, lock up a bike. Um, so that's something that we're going to need to look up, look at with our active transportation plan when that comes forward, and make sure, you know, we're able to do that. So, um, you know, we can make, add bike lanes and do what we can with the roads, but if there's nothing at the end, um, then it's, it's not going to matter as much, we're going to struggle on that goal, and, um, you know, with goal, I think it was TR4, that was, you know, zero-emission vehicles, and all the active transportation, those are zero-emissions too. Um, so that'll help us with, you know, all of our transportation goals. So, glad to see they're not siloed, um, on the active transportation plan, let's just make sure that we're thinking, you know, holistically on, you know, once we start putting that one together too.
Councilmember Grindal?
Yes. First of all, I love the name, um, so.
That was my one contribution to this.
So, you know, so just, I wanted to say that, just to start with, and I'm, I'm very supportive of this effort. I, I do have a couple of questions, um, and they, sometimes they get, they make, they make it a little complex, but, um, as you know, um, as everybody knows, um, you know, the greenhouse gas emissions don't stop at city boundaries, state boundaries, national boundaries, they're, it's a, it's a, it's a lar, much larger issue. That said, it's critical, particularly since the federal government has vacated the field pretty much on these things, on these issues, um, it, it is critical that you, at the grassroots, do take, take this into account, so, but also, I, I, I hope as you go forward, we do recognize that these are, these are really big issues, and little, little Newark can't do that much for them, and that becomes, um, particularly important when you're talking about adaptation, for example, sea level rise, to try to address that from a, from a particular city's point of view. Water really doesn't avoid, doesn't, does not, um, obey those, those boundaries and jurisdictions, so I hope that as part of the, this effort, um, and in fact, I would expect, there's, um, sort of a robust discussion of cooperation regionally and subregionally, so, so I just wanted to, I just wanted to bring that, um, forward, and, um, the, um, another, another element, and this, I'm an urban planner by background, so you're going to hear, hear some, some of this from me as the years go by, um, the, um, building housing in Newark that it, that matches with the, with the jobs that we have in Newark is a, an important way of reducing greenhouse gases. If we don't provide the housing within our reg, within our area, people are moving to Tracy, Modesto, and traveling, and, and, and I don't know how you can a, address that situation, that something that might cause a minor increase in, um, greenhouse gases within Newark is actually saving the region substantially. Uh, it's not an easy thing to do, I know, but I think we really have to keep our eye on that prize. It's, um, it's, it's reasonable to, it's reasonable that, that Newark and our surrounding cities provide housing for the people who are working here, and that matches with the people that are working there, here, that they, it's affordable for them, and it's, and it's also a product that they want, so I just wanted to bring that, um, bring that up, and, um, appreciate the emphasis on trees, and, um, Councilmember Jorgens', uh, discussion about the, um, about the urban forest is, is very important, um, want to see that. One, um, pet peeve I have, hopefully this gets reflected, particularly as our climate is warming, which, and it clearly is, I would, I would like to see more transit shelters, the people who are doing the socially right thing and using transit are standing out in the rain, standing, um, standing in the sun. I really would like to see an effort, um, and again, this is a regional effort, this is not something the city necessarily does on its own, but I, I, I hope that would be reflected in this, in this effort. And then lastly, you know, woo, um, it, lastly, I'd like to see, um, um, some reference to improving with the city buildings, whether or not we're going to be adding additional um, solar power generation, whether we'd be, if we do, whether we'd be essentially a net-zero, um, building here and in other locations, so I, I, I'm, I, I assume that that's discussed, but I really want to highlight that, because we can make investments, and by doing so, we not only reduce greenhouse gases, but we set an example to the, to the community, so, um, with that, I, with that, I want to go back to just saying, I'm very impressed with the effort and strongly supportive. Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Scanlon, I have a number of questions and comments, um, and some of the questions I'm going to have are really more for the audience that are listening in, um, because we went over a lot of different terms, terminology and things of that nature, greenhouse gases, and we have a significant goal to achieve reduction in greenhouse gases. Talk briefly to our residents as to how we measure those reduction in greenhouse gases. Is that done by the city? Is that done through mayor quality management? Who, who actually does that measurement, and maybe?
Can I, can I call my lifeline on that one?
Pardon me?
Hannah, call my lifeline.
Oh, yeah.
Hannah, our consultant, they did the calculations for us, so they, Hannah might be able to answer. Uh, Hannah, are you there?
Uh, I, I am here. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Uh, my name's Hannah Kornfeld, I work for Ascent Environmental, we've been supporting the city on this, uh, project the whole time. I'm very honored that Jim has called me his lifeline here. Essentially, greenhouse gas emissions are not typically measured like you would see for air pollutants, um, so there aren't monitors that are kind of out there, uh, taking constant measurements. What we instead look at is what are the activities that generate greenhouse gas emissions? So, think about vehicles on the road, how many miles are those vehicles driving? That's the activity, and then we have what we call emissions factor, so how much greenhouse gas emissions are being produced per mile that that vehicle drives? And so, uh, those combination of, of multiplying your activity by your, um, emissions factor gets us an estimate of the greenhouse gas emissions. So, just as we do for the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, uh, we do the same for the measures where we're looking at how much are we able to reduce VMT and therefore emissions? And, as one example.
No, that's excellent clarification, thank you. We, we really look at the activities that create the greenhouse gases, and as we reduce those activities, then we'll see the, the, the benefits of that. So, to Councilmember, um, Jorgens' question regarding urban forest plans, for example, and other activities that you mentioned, Mr. Benunus, those activities come to us. I would ask that staff input into the memoranda how much we anticipate that activity is going to reduce greenhouse gases, um, some estimation. I think it's important for the public to know that as we put forward these activities, there's a real benefit, not only just in putting trees, but also a reduction in greenhouse gases, I would ask if that be included. Gray water, do we use gray water as part of our landscaping for our parks, for example?
I don't believe so, and I believe, um.
Isn't that what it's called, gray water?
Yeah, gray wa, yeah. Well, purple pipe, if you're talking about, you're not talking about recycled water?
Yeah, recycled water.
ACWD looked at it, and I believe they have not moved forward with.
Okay.
Recycled water, is my understanding.
Okay. Certainly, I would, again, who knows, the, the cost benefit may be one that is, you know, it sounds great environmentally, but it, you know, the cost would be significant, so I would certainly encourage us to continue to monitor that. Uh, you mentioned density and housing, and I know the state has imposed, uh, Mr. Benun, a number of, um, requirements on local governments to increase housing, of course. At some point, do we need to reexamine our general plan as it relates to density housing to, to ensure that we're building at the highest capacity, to ensure the best density, to help our reduction in those greenhouse gases?
I'm going to invite our community development director, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Hannah, and Councilmember Stephen Turner, community development director. Yes, the general plan housing element that was adopted by council a few years ago does set out the eight-year goals and policies and actions that the city will take to promote more housing into the future. So, um, the housing element's about a few years old, we're actively implementing the plan, and look forward to the new housing that will be built.
Great. And again, similarly, as we bring these developments forward, and we're looking at maybe increasing the density, again, uh, what measurement of greenhouse gases can we anticipate as a result of that, uh, development? Mr. Scanlon, will you be coming back to the council, for example, on an annual basis with kind of a matrix in terms of, of, I think it was 90-something strategies, or, you know, here's where we're at with these, and it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to accomplish everything in a year, certainly, but, you know, kind of give the council an update on an annual basis as to how we're doing on those different targets?
Uh, yes, I'd be happy to do that. We're going to, as part of the plan, we're going to have a, a five-year schedule for the, for the, um, the things that we can implement in the next few years, and we can certainly bring those back, um, annually, if you like, and give you an update on those.
I'll leave that up to you, Mr. Benun, when you think it's appropriate. Annually may be too soon, since we're looking at a 35 target and a 45 target, annually may be too soon, but I think giving the council an update periodically in terms of how we're doing on those strategies, I'll leave it up to you, Mr. Benun, as to when you think that would be appropriate. Just reading through all my scribbled notes here, this has been my last comment, and certainly more of a comment, not a question, uh, this has been a significant issue, and I think Councilmember Grindal mentioned, it's not just Newark, it's not the region, this is a global issue, and I think you, Mr. Scanlon, have done a great job of bringing together opportunities for the community to participate, comment, provide suggestions on efforts that they think we should look at implementing as we try to reduce greenhouse gases and/or look at, um, our, you know, our flood zones and things of that nature. So, I'm hopeful that, uh, the community's been real actively engaged in this process, because at the end of the day, we then come under criticism when we, the public feels that we're not doing the best that we can do to try to reduce these environmental impacts, so I encourage residents in the city to actively participate, their voices are important to us, they're the ones, as we all are, impacted by these environmental impacts, so I would hope that the community will continue to remain actively engaged. Those are my comments. Any final comments from my colleagues? Thank you for the report.
Great, thank you.
The next item on the agenda, folks, is the adoptive resolution designating the Measure GG Oversight Committee to review the expenditures of revenue from the transient occupancy tax pursuant to ordinance number 553, and approving the mayor's appointments to the Measure GG and Oversight Committee. One clarification, if I may, Mr. Benun, I thought we were looking at combining Measure GG with Measure LL, am I?
That's correct.
Is that going to be part of the presentation?
Correct.
I'm sorry to take, take away, uh, Ms. Lee, or Mr. Benun.
Yes, good evening, your honor, members of the council. Uh, tonight's action is twofold, one, it would designate Measure G, excuse me, it would consolidate, uh, Measure GG and Measure LL, so it'd essentially be one Oversight Committee. Uh, if the council may recall, back in 2016, Newark voters passed, uh, Measure GG, essentially one half-cent sales tax, uh, that was used to fund the construction of our new civic center, and then, of course, as we're all aware, Newark voters passed a 4% transient occupancy tax increase, uh, this past fall. Tonight's staff report, we have Ms. Kristen Lee, who will be providing the recommendation for the consolidation. Uh, the second action item is, uh, assuming the council, uh, concurs with staff's recommendation to consolidate, so there's, uh, one committee, uh, the second action would be to confirm, uh, the mayor's appointments to fill, uh, three current vacancies. Uh, I'd be remiss if I failed to mention that the chair of the committee, Mr. Jim Lola, is here with us this evening, as well as the two nominees, uh, being recommended by the mayor this evening, uh, are here in the audience as well, so. Uh, with that in mind, I'm going to pass it over to Finance Director Kristen Lee. Ms. Lee?
Thank you, City Manager Benun. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, members of the city council. Um, so item F2 recommends that the city council consider adopting a resolution that one, designates the existing Measure G Oversight Committee to also perform the oversight responsibilities for Measure LL revenues and expenditures, and to also confirm the mayor's appointment to three current vacancies that are on that committee. And to provide some background, in November of 2024, Newark voters approved Measure LL, which increased our transient occupancy tax, also known as the hotel tax, from 10% to 14%. This change was codified with ordinance 553, and it includes a requirement for independent community oversight to ensure transparency and accountability. The city already has an established Measure GG committee, and, um, the committee currently reviews the expenditures that are related to our one-half-cent sales tax. Um, and to meet the oversight requirement for Measure LL, and also to build on this proven structure, staff recommends expanding the role of the existing Measure GG committee, and to also oversee the Measure LL funds. And this approach promotes the efficiency by using the established oversight structure, as well as continuity and consistency by aligning the oversight of both voter-approved revenue streams. And, um, also to support this, the resolution tonight also includes appointments to fill the three vacancies, and this was followed by a public recruitment process, um, as well as interviews conducted by the mayor, and selections have been made. Um, after my report, um, if I may defer to the mayor to announce those appointments for city council confirmation. The Oversight Committee will continue to meet annually, and, uh, this will be supported by the Finance Department, and with the meetings ideally held between March and April, and this is to align with the city's audit and financial reporting schedule. Um, the, there will be separate agenda items, um, prepared for each of the measures, and this is mainly to maintain the transparency and to clearly distinguish between the funding sources. This dual role of structure reflects the best practice in municipal finance, and it reinforces Newark's commitment to transparency and public accountability. So, tonight, staff recommends the adoption of this resolution as a practical and responsible approach to fulfilling the Measure LL oversight requirements, and at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Any questions from the public on this item? Any questions from my colleagues on this item? Councilmember Jorgens?
Yes, just briefly, uh, will the committee still be called the Measure GG Oversight Committee?
Um, at this point, yes.
All right, I think for the sake of transparency, and not, not this evening, but in the future, we should think about a, uh, uh, changing the name to reflect its duties, so, I mean, we want to be transparent, that's one of our goals with, um, these committees, and, um, having a, you know, another measure under the name of another measure committee, it, it may be confusing to members of the public, so not some, you know, we should look at tonight, but at some point, we should look at, uh, finding a name for this committee that reflects the full scope of this work.
Happy to do so.
Thank you for the recommendation, that's noted. Um, if I may just add that, as part of our next steps, we will also be reviewing the current bylaws, and at that time, um, I think that would be a good opportunity to make that addition.
Great. Mr. Lola, thank you for your service on Measure GG, um, your participation, um, on that Oversight Committee has been instrumental, and, uh, you know, we, the city of Newark, can't get work done without the efforts and participation of the many volunteers that we have in our city organization, and, uh, Jim, I want to thank you for your many years of service to Measure GG, and now, because you're such, doing such a good job, we're going to expand it to include Measure LL as well. There's, and there's 24 other letters in the alphabet, so we got, we got more opportunities before. We couldn't do it without the help of Kristen and, and City Clerk, uh, Sheila Harrington. So, colleagues, I'm really pleased to announce that, uh, anytime we get applicants interested in assisting and participating on a volunteer basis to help us get the work, the important work done, uh, expected by our community, because as Mr. Jorgens, Councilmember Jorgens mentions, we need to be fully transparent, especially with our finances, you know? We, we read about every day governmental agencies that, um, you know, cross the line, and, and we're really, you know, respectful of our community in terms of making sure that every dollar that we receive, we spend it wisely, and that comes from your leadership, uh, Mr. Benun, at the city manager level, and the staff that you've, um, appointed or hired. So, it's my pleasure to announce, and I'd ask my colleagues to support, the three members that will be serving both Measure GG and Measure LL. Uh, Mr. Terrance Singh, Mr. Singh, would you stand and be recognized, my friend? Mr. Vinod Kumar, please stand and be recognized. And the last gentleman who's not here this evening is Mr. Daniel Cardenas, uh, so I would ask, uh, as we adopt the resolution, can we incorporate the appointment of these three folks to that, uh, committee in the same motion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Great. And I'd certainly invite my new members of these committees, if they'd like to say a word or two, feel free to come on up if they'd like. Mr. Terrence Singh, thank you, Mr. Singh.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and the council members. Thank you, and truly appreciate you guys nominating me to this position, and, you know, as you said, this is a fiduciary duty of the citizens of Newark to help city make wise decisions and take stride in making those voluntary efforts, and I'll do my best and I'll make the city proud. Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Kumar.
Good morning, Mr., good evening, Mr. Mayor, Michael, and as for the council members, thank you very much for giving me a chance to serve the city. As everybody know, I ran for the city council, my intention is to, you know, wherever I can help or facilitate the city services, I'd love to do that. And thank you for giving me this chance.
You're welcome. Anybody else that'd like to comment on this item? If not, we'll look for a resolution to combine Measure GG and Measure LL and make the appointments as recommended by the mayor. By Councilmember Grindal?
Second.
By Councilmember Jorgens, please vote. And that passes unanimously, four votes, yes, and Vice Mayor Little is out on vacation. Again, thank you for your volunteerism. Mr. Lola, thank you very much for, again, continuing to stay on Measure GG and Measure LL. Your efforts are appreciated, and Ms. Lee, thank you for providing the necessary information for them to do the job that we, it's appreciated. All right, the last item on our agenda tonight is to adopt resolutions approving, one, the Memorandum of Understanding with the Newark Association of Miscellaneous Employees; two, the Memorandum of Understanding with the Newark Police Association; three, the Compensation and Benefit Plan for the Confidential Employees Group; four, the Compensation and Benefit Plan for the Management Supervisory and Professional Employee Group; five, amendment to the city's salary schedule in conformance with California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5. Mr. Benoon?
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. Our city attorney will provide the staff report. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And before I do that, I just want to read the title of the prior resolution, Resolution of City Council of the City of Newark Designating Measure GG Oversight Committee to Review the Expenditures of Revenue from the Transient Occupancy Tax Pursuant to Ordinance Number 553 and Approving the Mayor's Appointments to the Measure GG Oversight Committee. So I thank you, good evening, Mayor Hand and members of the city council, I'll be providing the staff report on this item. Just as a preliminary matter, SB 1436 requires that an oral report be provided anytime there is an adjustment to executive compensation. Executives are defined under state law as the city manager as well as city department heads. This report will satisfy the requirements of that law. This evening, we'll be requesting the council to adopt five resolutions for Memorandum of Understanding with Newark Association of Miscellaneous Employees, also known as NAME, Newark Police Association, also known as NPA, and the Compensation and Benefit Plans for the Confidential Employee Group and the Management Supervisory and Professional Employee Group, as well as an amendment to the city's salary schedule as required by California regulations. I want to start by providing highlights of the NAME MOU, which currently expires at the end of this fiscal year. The proposed MOU will run for a three-year period, beginning July 1st of this year through June 30th of 2028. The members of NAME ratified the proposed MOU on May 28th. Some of the highlights regarding the adjustments are, first, adjustment of classifications to attain a 5% differential between salary steps for positions within this bargaining unit; second, a 4% general salary increase, which will take effect on July 1st this year; 3.5% salary increases on July 1st, 2026, and July 1st of 2027, for a cumulative 11% general salary increase over the term of the MOU. Additionally, the MOU provides for a one-time off-salary schedule lump sum payment of $1,000 for each member of the bargaining unit, and an additional $1,000 lump sum, bless you, lump sum payment to association members with 15 or more years of service as of July 1st of this year. Additionally, the MOU includes increases of 10% to the cafeteria plan for medical, dental, and vision insurance on January 1st, 2026, additional 5% on January 1st, 2027, and then additional 5% on January 1st, 2028, in terms of city contributions to the cafeteria plan, as well as prorated plan benefits for regular permanent staff that work less than 30 hours per week. The exact amounts of those changes over the next approximate three-year period are outlined in the report. Some other revisions include unscheduled overtime will now provide for four-hour minimum hours, work for all, unscheduled overtime. Previously, there were three- and four-hour minimums that applied depending on the time of day, and if the day was a holiday or scheduled day off. Additionally, the city will observe Juneteenth as a paid holiday, and the brevity leave policy was updated to include reproductive loss leave. I'm now going to cover the revisions to the, or the new NPA MOU. Similarly to the NAME MOU, this one expired at the end of this fiscal year, and the period of time for this is also July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2028. And members of NPA ratified the proposed MOU on June 11th of this year. Some of the highlights include that the NPA employees will receive the same general salary increase provided to NAME employees. In addition to the general salary increase, there will be a supplemental base wage adjustment provided to first responders as defined in the MOU. This will include an additional 3% increase on July 1st, 2025, 1.5% salary increases on July 1st, 2026, and July 1st, 2027. This will be a cumulative 17% general salary increase for these positions over the term of the MOU. Additionally, certificate incentive pay will increase to 10% from 7% for post-advanced certificates earned by police officers and police sergeants, and certificate incentive pay for dispatch personnel will increase from 2.5% to 3.5% for post-intermediate certificates, certificate holders, and from 3.5% to 7% for post-advanced certificate holders. The cafeteria plan for medical, dental, and vision insurance will increase in the same amounts as specified in the NAME MOU that I addressed earlier. Some other revisions include that the 1.5% employee cost share, of the employer's cost share of CalPERS pension benefit for sworn PEPRA members will be eliminated once CalPERS approves a contract amendment. The sick leave incentive program will be eliminated from the existing MOU. The city will observe Juneteenth as a paid holiday, and the brevity policy will also be updated to include reproductive loss leave. I'm now going to cover revisions to the Compensation and Benefit Plan for the Management Supervisory and Professional Employee Groups. I do want to note that these updates apply to the city's department heads, who are a member of this group. Additionally, the city manager has certain provisions contained within his contract that will make these changes apply to him. I will note those changes as I go over them here. This group of employees will receive the same general salary increase provided to NAME employees. Additionally, the general salary increases will apply to the city manager pursuant to his contract. The police chief will receive a one-time supplemental base wage adjustment, which is provided to the first responders as described in the NPA MOU. Additionally, he will receive uniform allowance, general leave, and general leave conversion pay, similar to the Newark Police Management Association Memorandum of Understanding. Market adjustments of 3.0, I'm sorry, 3% are provided for classifications of assistant planner, associate planner, and senior planner, and 5% for the classifications of crime analyst, facilities supervisor, maintenance supervisor, management analyst 1, and management analyst 2. And additionally, there are range adjustments for a number of classifications that are identified in the report. I do want to highlight that the, two of those range revisions are for department heads or local agency executives, as identified under state law. Those positions are the assistant city manager. The range upon the effective date of this adoption, I'm sorry, the effective date of this Compensation and Benefit Plan, for the assistant city manager will be from $263,993.60 to $316,000.804.80 annually, and for the police chief, it'll be $258,726 annually, and $310,471.20 Additionally, the medical benefits that I identified for the NAME and NPA MOUs will be adjusted similarly for this group. Those will also be adjusted for the city manager pursuant to his contract with the city. The city will observe June 19th as a paid holiday, and the brevity leave policy will be updated to include reproductive loss leave. Those also accrue pursuant to the city manager's contract. And finally, the Confidential Employee Group Compensation and Benefit Plan will be adjusted to provide the same general salary increase provided to NAME employees, as well as a one-time lump sum payment of $1,000 to each confidential employee, an additional $1,000 payment to confidential employees with 15 or more years of service as of July 1st, 2025. The medical benefits that accrue to NAME, NPA, and the management group will also accrue to the confidential group. The other revisions include pay-upon-promotion language was updated to align with personnel roles, so minor change there, and the city will observe Juneteenth as a paid holiday, brevity leave policy was also updated to include reproductive loss leave. And the final resolution is a adjustment to the salary schedule to reflect the salary updates. That resolution is required by California regulations, and I do want to note that there is a slip sheet for the city council with an updated salary schedule. I'd request that any motion to approve these resolutions include incorporation of the salary schedule that's included with the slip sheet, for clarity. And with that, I'm certainly glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, city attorney. Are there any questions from the audience on this item? See, now turn to the colleagues. Questions, comments? Councilmember Grindal?
First of all, you need to drink water.
Longer than I thought.
I appreciate that.
We pay him by the minute.
So, our employees, our talented employees need to be properly compensated in order to, in order to keep them working for us and keep them doing the great work they're doing. So I'm supportive of these changes to keep our talented people, and also to be able to attract others when we have vacancies, as we discussed earlier tonight. So I just wanted to comment on that, that it's very important. This is an investment in our community, and so I'm strongly in support. I am concerned about the fiscal cost down the line, and we'll talk more about that as we discuss the budget. And so we really need to keep our eye on growing our economic base, so we can continue to, we can continue to provide the best services to our citizens, but we need to keep our eye on the ball for making sure our economic base is increased. So with that, that's my, those are all my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Great. I don't know if your version is the same as my version, but it looks like mine includes a three-year signed contract by the assistant city manager to continue in her, did you see that? No? I agree with Councilmember Grindal, we have outstanding employees. As many of you know, Mr. Grindal, myself, Ms. Contanzio is a public employee, we're all public employees. And the key word there is "public employee," we're here to serve the public, and our employees exemplify that professionalism every day, and none of us get into the work of public employment or teachers for the salary. We get into it because we want to serve the public. And at the end of the day, if we're compensated accordingly, then we appreciate that. But none of us get into this job thinking someday I'm going to be wealthy because I was a city employee. It doesn't, it doesn't work that way. We serve because it's important for us to provide that to our community. So thank you to all the public employees that serve the city of Newark. Mr. Benoon, you've built a great team here in the city, and I'm proud to, I'm proud, as my colleagues are, to represent the community in this regard. So with that being said, I would ask whoever makes the motion to incorporate the amended sheet as reference to F3, that we all received a copy of tonight, just simply include that in your motion, and I'll look for a motion.
Happily moved with the amendments reflected
Thank you.
on the June 26 memorandum.
Councilmember Jorgens, thank you.
Seconded.
By Councilmember Grindal. And that passes with four ayes, and Vice Mayor Eve Little is absent this evening.
Resolution of City Council of the City of Newark Approving Adopting Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Newark and the Newark Police Association Authorizing City Manager to Execute the Memorandum of Understanding and Approving an Amendment to the City's Salary Schedule in Conformance of California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 55. Resolution of City Council of the City of Newark Approving Adopting Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Newark and Newark Association of Miscellaneous Employees Authorizing City Manager to Execute the Memorandum of Understanding and Approving an Amendment to the City's Salary Schedule in Conformance with California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5. Resolution of City Council of the City of Newark Approving and Adopting Compensation and Benefit Plan for the Management Supervisory and Professional Employee Group Authorizing City Manager to Execute the Compensation and Benefit Plan Acknowledging Concurrent Revisions Pursuant to City Manager Employment Agreement and Approving an Amendment to the City's Salary Schedule in Conformance with California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5. And Resolution of City Council of the City of Newark Approving and Adopting a Compensation and Benefit Plan for the Confidential Employee Group Authorizing the City Manager to Execute the Compensation and Benefit Plan and Approving an Amendment to the City's Salary Schedule in Conformance with California Code of Regulations Title II, Section 570.5.
Excellent. Notice I paused a little bit, so you could actually read that resolution this time. So thank you for that. City manager update?
Yes, good evening, Your Honor and members of the council. Four updates for you this evening. The first is the Community Development Advisory Committee that does have a vacancy, and the city clerk is accepting applications to fill the vacancy. The Community Development Advisory Committee provides recommendations to the council for the use of community development block grant funds, and to the Community Development Director on priorities for the use of housing funds. The deadline is July 8th, before 2:00 p.m. Applications are available on the city's website, and the applications must be turned in person to the city clerk's office at City Hall. Applicants must be current Newark residents and at least 18 years of age. Secondly, on July 4th, the Alameda County Fire Department will be holding its annual Fourth of July breakfast. This is from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Fire Station 27. This is the fire station on Cherry Street, next to Maori. The proceeds will all go to Viola Bith Community Services, as well as Love Newark. In addition to the pancake breakfast, there'll be an emergency response live scenario, booth showcasing our CERT program, as well as a trailer display, classic cars, a dunk tank. I don't know if Deputy Chief Nishimoto will be participating in this, no, he's shaking head negative. I think that was when he was division chief, he did that. And as well as balloon animals. So again, that's July 4th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the fire station on Cherry. The last two announcements are both from our rec. department. Summer sports camp, this is a multi-sports camp for ages 5 through 12. This is Monday, July 7th through Friday, July 11th, 9:00 a.m. to noon. Kids get to play all the favorite games, discover new sports they've never tried before, and it's here in writing, it's guaranteed to be a fun and exciting experience. More information is available on our website. And then last but not least, we do have a Grooven at the Grove Summer Concert Series event tomorrow night from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. over at Shirley Sisk Grove, next to New Park Mall. This is a free summer concert. The band that is playing is Everyday People, which is a classic Latin rock. It's tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. Gates open at 4:00, and again, that is at Shirley Sisk Grove. The next show after that is Friday, July 11th, and Friday, July 25th. Again, more information can be found on the city's website. That concludes my announcements for this evening.
Excellent. Council comments. Councilmember Contanzio?
Yes, thank you. I also want to say thank you for all
I also want to say thank you for all the excellent presentations, and congratulations on your appointment to Measure GG Oversight Committee, particularly to Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Kumar, and Mr. Singh. Thank you for being here today as well, Mr. Lola. And I also wanted to thank Newark City and staff for putting together a Juneteenth celebration. That was an excellent celebration. I was able to attend. It was at the Siliman Center, and many people were there, and that was our third annual one. And so, next year, we'll have our fourth one, and we'll just keep growing from there. I did meet with Ava Energy to discuss funds that are in reserves. Additionally, it is fireworks time. And so, what that means is even though we could shop other places in other cities to pick up fireworks, let's consider shopping in Newark. And the reason why is because this is really the way that we support our Newark nonprofits. And so, it's Newark nonprofits and the Newark community, and it's our community giving back to our community whenever we shop Newark. And so, the fireworks, I believe, start going on sale on Saturday, and they run all the way to July 4th. Thank you.
Councilmember Jorgens.
Yes, I just encourage, you know, our community to stay safe over the July 4th holiday. And, you know, with the July 4th holiday is we, you know, reflect on, you know, patriotism that, you know, our community would find ways to, you know, improve our community, whether that's joining a commission, as we've seen, you know, three terrific Newark resident, resident appointed to our Measure GG committee, or, you know, any other way that they can find to make their community a little better. I hope that's something that our community reflects on over the July 4th holiday.
Thank you. Councilmember Grindal.
Yes, I'll be holding my coffee with a council member on June 29th, that's Sunday, at 10:00 a.m. at the Old Town Starbucks. Anybody wants to come, come by and chat about Newark? I'd be really happy to talk with people. Of course, you can also email or call me at any time that works, that works for you, and happy to follow up with a phone call or a meeting if that, if that works. But just to make it clear to the community that if you want to come and talk, just stop by, and look forward to talking with you. Secondly, the, the city, the city and the, the city negotiated a school site as a part of the sanctuary development, and the clock is running out on that development, and it's, and it's what otherwise returned to the developer. Serious dire consequences could occur to the community if that were the case. I can't, this wasn't agendized, so I can't go into, into great detail. I know you were thinking that. The, but I'd like to see a transparent, open discussion at a, at our next council meeting where we talk about the opportunities and, and constraints and concerns about, about that location, what the city can do. And, and so I'd look for support from my colleagues to have a transparent and open public discussion of what the, what the issues are and what we might be able to, what the city might be able to do to ameliorate the issues. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I have, I do have a couple other comments, if you, but if you could let me know if that's okay at this point?
I, I don't know where the Brown Act draws the line on conversations like this item. I'll look to the city attorney to give me some advice on this. At this point, I think Councilmember Grindal is simply asking the council to agendize an item. That seems to be the, the issue that we're limited to discussing. I'll speak to that item. I'm not willing to ask the council to agendize this item. And the reason I'm not willing to ask the council to do that is because the development agreement, city attorney stopped me anytime I'm going further than I should.
I think if, if the discussion is whether to agendize it or not, and you're just seeking to, brief comments as to why you do or not want to, as well as the rest of the council.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to limit my comment to that. The reason I would not support, I would ask my council not to support agendizing this item is it's really not a City of Newark item. It's not a City of Newark issue that we can involve ourself. The development agreement was specific in terms of advising the Newark Unified School District that if they wanted to have a school built at Sanctuary, there was land available for them to do that. And the agreement, which is a contract, was real specific. They had seven years to begin construction of that school site, and that date is going to run out in August of this year. So, we, the city, have been waiting patiently for seven years, encouraging the school district to come forth with a plan to build a school site at that location. They've indicated that they are not currently interested in building a school at that location. So, any request by us to the developer to extend it would really fall on deaf ears because we really have no, no real interest in this item that we can put any pressure on them to do so. So, that would be my comment. I would ask the council not to consider Councilmember Grindal's request. Any other comments? Or is there a motion to put this item on the July 26th meeting if, if we were to agendize it?
I would make that motion.
Is there a second? No second, that item dies on, on the motion. Mr. Grindal.
Thank you. The, oh, just, just wanted to, to note, when it comes to the concerts in the park, that they're free, and there's money-back guarantee if, if you're unhappy. So, these are fantastic community events, and look forward to, look, look forward to these continuing going on, and the mariachi concert as well, mariachi event as well is coming up. So, thank you very much for continuing to those fantastic events. So, thank you.
Thank you, council member. I want to echo my colleagues' comments regarding July 4th. It's America's birthday. It's really an opportunity for us to celebrate, especially Newark as a welcoming community, to help those that may be new to our community to understand the importance and the struggles that we have gone through year after year to become the country that we are today and the community that we are today as a welcoming community. I want to thank the fire department in advance, and I want to thank the police department in advance because we will have a lot of city staff and county staff out there making sure that our community is safe. And as much as we sell safe and sane fireworks, the ones that stay low to the ground, the ones that don't project up into the skyline, those are only legal. We don't sell those. We don't support those. Our police officers are out there actively enforcing the ordinances that now allow us to issue $1,000 citations. We're hopeful that that message comes across loud and clear. I don't use the word "loud" necessarily in that regard. But thank you to the police department for that. I appreciate what they do. I want to also commend Councilmember Contanzio. She joined me for Juneteenth. It was quite an event, our third annual event. It's going to continue to grow. I'm glad the employees and the council supported giving the employees Juneteenth as a federal holiday, so they'll start to see that benefit next year as well. We also had Big Truck Day just recently over at the Siliman Center, and real thanks to all of the organizations, the fire department, the police department, the water district, Alameda County Water District, and all the other folks that participated in the Big Truck Day. To see the smiles of all the three, four-year-olds walking around, sitting in trucks and trying trucks, and it was such an incredibly festive event. And it was only an hour and a half, 10, 10 to 11:30. I said, well, they timed it perfectly. 11:30, kids got to go home for naps, you know? So, a great event. Big thanks to the Parks Department, Mr. Beddun, for organizing that event as well. And before I close, just want to wish my wife Kathleen a happy anniversary. We celebrated our 47th wedding anniversary yesterday. She continues to put up with me year after year after year, and there must be some additional fringe benefits that she's relying upon down the road. I'll leave it at that, so thank you, Mr. Grindal. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting, not adjourn the meeting, we're going to close session for conference with labor negotiators pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, Assistant City Manager Vorka and Human Resources Director Frye, employee organization, the Newark Police Management Association. We will adjourn to closed session. Thank you for your attendance today.